Hello everybody and welcome to the little temporary kitchen that we have set up here on stream. I am super, super excited to be doing our first ever sponsored segment by HelloFresh or just by anybody at all. This is the first time I've ever tried to work with a sponsor and it's because of the first time a company has actually really interested me on a more personal level. I'm gonna chat at you guys for about a second, so I'll actually turn on just a little bit of music for now and then we'll mute it as we get into some games and we'll get rolling. But, yes, absolutely sponsorship pog, my first ever sponsor HelloFresh. And welcome in, first time chat from the Nordic haunt. Congratulations on affiliate, I'm pretty sure buddy, I think you made it here recently. And maybe you can start working with some sponsors here in the future, if you'd ever like to talk about how I did this one, I can absolutely do so. So hey, congratulations, absolutely man. If you want just a couple emotes, I have some artist friends who you can absolutely commission or myself who you can commission. Or I will say that just because you're kind of a cool dude, I might just draw you one or two, one or two little ones, just for funs. Just because it seems like you got some cool themes to your stream and even though I'm not a huge League player, I do want to come hang out with you more often virtually. Let me see here, oh, I see that I do have HelloFresh currently in front of you guys, so some of the messages are kind of disappearing behind that. But real quick, I will chatter chatter about HelloFresh, the sponsorship, what it means for you guys. And then we will move on with the stream and get rocking for today. If you would like to learn more about HelloFresh, if you would like to sign up and support my sponsorship more directly, you can click my link that's down below stream or use the code that you can see featured alongside that little banner. You will get one extra, one extra free breakfast item included in your weekly meal kit for life. For however long you maintain your subscription with HelloFresh, you'll get an extra breakfast item included in your box ever and ever. So I think that's really awesome. I really want to get into meal preparation and just being generally better about like preparing my lunches and stuff like that. Because if you know anything about me, it's a lot of like deli sandwiches, fast food and just like garbage that I can find in the value section of whatever grocery stores nearby work. So like it's just what happens to work out. I'd like to be a little bit more prepared and one of the ways that I want to like work on being more prepared without necessarily like killing my budget is trying things like HelloFresh and other just like prepackaged or like pre like rationed, like yeah, portioned. That's the, that's the word I was looking for, thank you. And this is why Bibs is here, she's very helpful in these kind of things. Pre-portioned servings that will get you all of the like most essential macros on those days where you don't have time to think about it. Or where you just like want to make the process easier because you want to make it easier. I'm really excited because HelloFresh has a huge menu of a lot of different options from food all over the world of every different like diet variety that you can imagine. And it all sounds super delicious and I can't wait to try it. Me and Bibs are gonna be making our first order of HelloFresh here in the next week or so and trying out some stuff. So I will be letting you guys know probably here on Sundays, like in between me getting home from work and starting stream, probably gonna be cooking up some HelloFresh meals, eating them here on stream while we play some cozy games and chatting with you guys and giving you a direct review of how good it is.
I'm very excited.
Yeah, I'm so excited to try that as well, because there's so many like Mediterranean and Asian dishes that I've never tried before that I am like super into. There's a bunch of African dishes that I've never had access to, just ingredient wise, that I now get to try and I'm super, super excited. And like it's just gonna be a whole like exploration for me because it's our first sponsorship, it's my first meal prep, it's a whole bunch of other like firsts. So we're gonna kind of embrace all these firsts with some things that are a bit more comfortable, that we're a bit more used to. And then we're gonna rock and roll and have a great stream. Sound good to you, Bibs?
Sounds great to me.
Awesome, if it sounds good to you chat, go ahead and tell me hell yeah. And if you want to see anything more about HelloFresh or you want to help my sponsorship directly, one last reminder for today, click my link or use my code, get a free breakfast item for life. One extra breakfast item per box per week while your subscription is active forever. So if you don't think that's a pretty good deal, that's cool, that's totally fine and you can wait for the next sponsorship. But if you do think it's a good deal, follow those steps. Listen to HelloFresh. Hello, yeah! Heck yeah, HelloFresh. Very exciting. That is a fun little cross-section there of... Those words overlap and fun stuff. That is our sponsorship plug, that is our official bit of that, so we are going to switch over to chat cam game. Bibs is gonna get our lobby loaded up and we're gonna play some Stardew and just enjoy ourselves, kinda chat with you guys. How's it going chat? How you doing? Welcome in.
Hey, should be loaded in.
Awesome, awesome. Got it open to co-op. Yup, Dust Thorn Farm. This is a little farm that we threw together just to try to relearn a lot of the core mechanics of Stardew and try to make sure that there wasn't a whole bunch of stuff we never really like played around with before 1.6 comes out, because when 1.6 comes out, well, then it's just, it's time to try all the new content. We're not gonna have time for all this stuff that's been here for ages. Yeah, I am, oh gosh, I am so excited for 1.6. I'm actually gonna go ahead and real quick, put that in title. Update the category to the correct game rather than just chatting, because we're no longer just chatting. Stardew Valley. And preparing for 1.6 in the title, wonderful, wonderful. Make sure that we still have a branded content tag on, awesome, just to disclose that this is a promotional ad, you know, by HelloFresh. But I will take it because it just means I get to come hang out with you guys and play games more, so. Never seen a stream of mods, but otherwise it'd be great. Yeah, the mod package will probably be an issue. I wonder if we can possibly create like a a series of states of the game and then just like load up your old version that's got a bunch of mods as like one boot state and then... But usually that requires like a mod manager that can kind of create these secondary instances and stuff like that. I don't know if we've gotten that support. Music volume on. Deli sounds. Fish biting noise, I like four, or no, three. There it is. More like a frog noise, but I think that's cool for fishing. I ended up doing a lot of fishing today, I will probably throw on my captain's outfit.
Are you loaded in?
Uh, I, yeah, I'm all loaded in. Should be good to go.
Yeah, because time doesn't pause when we're on the load.
Oh, right, right, right. Alright.
Oh.
Is this ready or is it almost ready?
Almost ready.
Yeah, yeah.
Almost ready.
It's also been a couple weeks since we played on the farm that we started to relearn mechanics, but...
Oh yeah.
Oh well, we'll settle back into it.
Oh wait, we have sprinklers on these, what am I doing?
Yeah.
They come down here.
We've got sprinklers on a lot of stuff, but not these here.
Oh, the luas at the beach? Do we need to bring something to the luau? I think we do.
I feel like you're supposed to bring something to the luau, but I don't remember.
I think we have a backstock.
I think the luau is the one with the soup, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So that one, it's usually best to bring good soup ingredients, like vegetables that we grew last season. Yeah, do we have any gold or silver from last season? Cool.
Unless we got desperate for money at one point, then no.
Totally possible. I will also say that I did just pick, um, let me remember, what's the inventory button? E, there we go. I just picked some spice berries and I picked a gold one.
We don't wanna put the foraging.
Oh, not a foraging gun?
No.
Oh, I just lost connection to the server.
Oh, come back.
But if that continues to be an issue, then we have a concern, but hopefully that's not the case.
Good thing we have...
Because we're basically on land.
Good thing we have other food inspired games at our fingertips. I guess this isn't technically food inspired, but there's, if you are anything like me, the cooking mechanic is really fun. Ooh, we have some gold green beans, I got those.
Uh, we got a gold anchovy which would go in there really well, so I'll take that and donate it if you want to take something else gold.
I have the green...
I'm gonna put the gold spice berry in here and then I'm gonna sell everything else. And then I'm gonna hold onto these geodes for cracking later. They're punishing you for saying you might forage in the potluck, but yeah, I guess. Freaking Mary Lewis is like, no!
Hey, I gotta go check on the chickens.
I don't want it. Don't ruin my soup with your dirty berries. Goodness gracious, mayor.
Okay, I gotta check on the chickens.
Me acting like the mayor controls anything in this town? I missed those, but get them on second pass, go check. Right. Uh, I should probably get a move on, huh?
I'm about ready to head to the luau if you are.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I'm gonna sell off these just so I don't forget to. And I should be ready to go. Um, yeah, right here.
I just gotta throw this in the resource box real quick.
Cool. Yeah, I'll have to relearn the organization of our boxes.
Uh, tools, resource, garden, and then your chest.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
I don't have a chest, but...
Uh, there's a sweet pea up there. It'll probably still be there tomorrow.
I'm right behind you.
Oh. You're right, you're right.
Oh, now I'm walking at the same pace.
I mean, he's pretty lively, ain't he?
Say hi on my way, he's literally right there.
Doesn't count as when you're saying highs, I don't think. Actually, I don't know if...
Yeah, no.
Today?
Yeah.
Okay.
But the luau interacts differently.
Oh, it's evening too, isn't it?
No, literally right now.
Oh, okay. For some reason I was thinking it was one of the evening events.
No, but like it's one of those things, like it doesn't, ooh, the shop! It's, sorry, it's one of those things that doesn't like, oh my gosh, we could spend three grand on a star fruit.
We totally could. Let me sweep this. I mean, I guess the advantage of doing that would be that we'd be able to donate it.
That is true.
Which is kind of a way of like shortcutting one of the seasonal fruits. But I don't know if that's one of the required donations, actually.
I do believe it is. I don't have my Stardew Valley planner.
Don't forget to add something to the soup, I'm adding my anchovy.
Okay.
Good thing we didn't hold on to the mayor shorts, huh?
We don't have them yet.
Did we, I mean, I, I think...
We're not good enough friends with Marnie.
We didn't rush being friends with Marnie, so we couldn't pull that off as quickly. But we could have.
Also, that is 1.6 update behavior.
Oh, what?
What? Yeah.
No, that feels like an old Easter egg. I feel like you save the 1.6 for all the stuff that's new.
Yeah, but what if?
Yeah, fair enough. What if there's just a subtle little change in the way he behaves?
Yeah, also, we can do it multiple, like these events happen every year.
That's a good point. Man, you think the mayor would eventually get sick if you put his underwear in there?
Well, no, I mean, the quest is...
That music is too loud. I might have a little peace and quiet to enjoy the ocean. Alright, buddy. Ah, the smell of the ocean takes me back many years, long before you were born. You don't know how old I am. I'm ancient.
I'm almost done talking at the moment.
Unresponsive, yeah, dude, she is boogying down. Vincent isn't a good dancer. I'm bored. Ow, you stepped on my foot, dear. This is tiring, honey. Are you ready to visit the buffet soon? Dance, but I don't want to get sweaty. Yeah, fair enough. Perfect weather for a beach party, huh? Alright, this has been like, why have you had the best outlook out of anybody so far?
Let me know when you're ready to...
Alright, I'm just chatting with everybody. Tired to socialize with everyone, I'd rather watch the sea. That's a fair point, Abigail. At least you're not as depressing about it. What about you, Sebastian? You gonna say some emo stuff? When your son Sam put a pound of anchovies in the potluck soup. Oh, I kinda feel bad, because I'm gonna give this dude flashbacks. Shoot, I'm sorry for making fun of you. That soup's gonna taste like anchovy, though. Hey, quit. I'm full, but what else is there to do besides eat? I'm sorry, goof. Yeah, I just heard you cough a little bit, so I muted your mic for a sec. If you're stabilizing, you're good, let me know. Good thing I came with sunscreen. Whatever line this is, roasting smell awfully good. Alright. Uh, I'll unmute you. Careful.
Am I muted now?
Yep.
Sorry chat, my wawa tried to get me.
Though continuous rotation is key to achieving the perfect roast. Thanks, buddy. Do this festival every year to give the governor a taste of everything the valley has to offer. Governor, who cares? Fair enough, I guess. I'll be back here by the trees, air is a lot cooler. Alright. How's the farming coming along? Must be a very busy season for you. Oh, couple late. Stepped out of the door and found myself in the middle of all this hubbub. Oh, poor Elliot. You think you'd see it coming, but fresh vegetables from my garden in the communal soup pot. Hey, that's nice. Free buffet, one of the perks of living here. Enjoy it, kid. Talk to this lady and then the governor, I should be done with everybody. Hope the soup's good this year.
The lady has a name, her name is Jody.
I forget names, that means lady, yeah. And it's especially when I can't see all of somebody, I just, I can't tell. These blasted sandflies keep landing on the food. Fair enough. Alright, I think I have talked to, oh, I haven't talked to the actual governor. What a lovely occasion. It's always a joy to visit Stardew Valley. What we got, what we got to say, mayor? Soup time. One of the things I like about Coral Island is they actually do it festivals, that's cool. Very exciting. I've actually never gotten very far in Stardew, so a lot of this stuff, like I've seen a lot of the first year festivals and a lot of the stuff that likes very easy to access in the first year, but no idea outside of that.
Sorry, I totally forgot that it goes at its own pace and I was like, oh shoot, I've just been blowing through these, poor chat.
Well, folks, it's time once again for the potluck ceremony. I guess that y'all put high quality ingredients in the pot this year. We don't want the government, uh, governor to regret his visit to the valley. Let's sure hope not. Well, governor, would you do the honor of tasting the soup? Of course, I've been looking forward to this all year. Alright, fingers crossed, everybody. Um, it's actually kind of disgusting. I think I'll pass on the soup this year.
Oh no.
We're putting really nice ingredients, what did you put in?
I put in a green bean.
Put in a really nice green bean, I put in a really good anchovy, they're both gold star, like...
Maybe it was the anchovy.
I guess.
Who, what? Oh.
Yeah. Might have been the fish, unfortunately. Yeah, I had a feeling, if anything. Yeah, someone must have ruined it with a poor quality ingredient. With genuinely worse than us. What the hell? Well, does anyone want any? Alright, how bad is it? Soup wasn't very good, but otherwise luau was success. I guess that's something, time to head home. Dang it, bad fish. It was a glorious anchovy, it was a great anchovy! Oh! Alright. Yeah, I'm just going to bed. You know what? I think, I think that's today. Well, you know what? I'm gonna, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go fish. I'm gonna go do some mental health fishing. Hmm. This feels good. I changed my fish notification sound. Hit it! There we go. Show me... A little bit smaller UI scale. Give my zoom buttons. My lighting quality down a little bit. It keeps turning my music volume down. There a save button I'm forgetting to hit? I'm saving. Alright. What's Stardew game? I gotta say Stardew does nature sounds well, though. Our little tree sapling. Yeah, yeah, we're getting tired. We'll go to bed. There we go. Maybe a little bit of money off of the foraging plants that we farmed. Yeah. Alright, not too bad. He broke. That's, that's what's important. Alrighty. Ooh. Look at that. Purposely... Got some hops, ooh. I should start brewing some beer.
Do we have a cave?
Uh, I don't think so, but we probably have it unlocked, so we can probably, if not very close to unlocked, we can get one made.
Hmm, we do not have it unlocked yet. I don't think we're good enough friends with Sam. We need to make a store run?
Potentially, but I'm not sure. I'm gonna... Pick inventory here, so I got one silver hops, two regular. Start out. I'm gonna go chesty of our gold stuff or our stuff that we can doos with.
I think we need the regular one or one of the pot.
Uh, that, that might be. I'm gonna go ahead and put uh, all of those in the green box, all the hops. I'm gonna try to sort everything else out appropriately.
No, for the summer crops, we need tomato, blueberry, melon.
Ah, okay, okay.
And then five, five star melon.
Wait, did you say tomato?
Yeah. Oops! We just need one of them, though.
Yeah, yeah, I'll sell one, keep the other. I will sell everything else, because I'm pretty sure we got all of our foraging done ones, right? Or all the foraging ones that we got locked, at least. Yeah.
The forging. Um, summer forging's done. All forging's almost done. Exotic forging. We need to make some tabs.
Okay. I think we can work on that.
Okay, cool. I'm checking our caves. Do we have stuff in our cave? Do we have stuff in our cave?
Uh, I don't know.
An apricot, we have the fruit cave.
Ah, that's right, that's right. Because we usually do the back cave, right?
I like the mushroom cave, that's the one I do.
I just don't remember what it was. Ooh, I just got an omelet from the trash.
Is that an omelet?
Omelet. Sounds delicious. Aside from the fact that I got it out of the trash. Yeah, yeah, there is that. I was still gonna eat it, though. I ain't picking you like that. Behind this, so she can't see me digging trash. Mind your business.
Pray.
It trays me. Oh, gosh dang it. That is now time two.
Okay, we'll keep an eye on it.
Maybe, ah, no, I'd have to do it through IP and I'm not showing you guys my IP. Sorry. I was hoping that maybe just because we were both hardwired and it would just be quick and easy to hit it that way, but that it does not already create like a little server internally, so.
No need. Okay, well, if that happens again, we can always find something else.
Yeah. Or if it's just like a routine issue, but like if it just happens every once in a while, I'm not super pressed. Thankfully, I'm able to connect in pretty easily.
I don't have any tools.
I love Stardew so much. I have to re-go through this trash or...? No, so I've already gone through some of it at least. I'll check it. I just go to hope that doesn't happen like if we're both in the mines or if I'm like on a time crunch. Because that does kind of punish you, this game in particular, but...
Not all.
Never read a discreet.
Maybe if we're in like the skull caverns.
Yeah.
But regular mines, no, I can hold my own. You're good.
Rocks. Hmm, rocks. Ooh, shiny rock. I'm excited about that one. See if I already have, ooh, looks like I do. Oh, we'll double check. Wards, yeah, I don't have anything new to turn in. But got a large futon bear and a singing stone. There we go. Fun for you. Hi, Bibs.
Ah.
You fishing? You can do it.
This guy's being difficult, he better be worth it.
Perfect!
Ooh, new length in a pike!
That's big. Thirty-six inches. And your fancy musical rock. Yeah, it's gonna be great. I'm gonna fish.
Moving on.
I'm catching fish. Hey, that's a new sunfish, right?
The water looks different. I don't know if it's just the time of day, but it looks... I could just be wiggin'. I could just be that excited.
Could be.
For 1.6.
Yeah, the placebo of excitement can definitely itch him, but... Oh goodness, I think I need to get some. Blow my nose. I'm gonna fish one more. Yep. Just because the warm weather finally coming, it's starting to give me some sniffles. I was not picking them. I was looking at the bobber, not myself. Explanation point appears over here. For some reason I was expecting it to appear above the bobber. Perfect. Alright. Pretty consistent, I'm catching sunfish. Long as I do. Let's go to camp first.
Noted.
I don't like this, but I got friends who do. Like when you keep one named Brandon Soto around, because your friends like it, but you don't really care. You don't really drink. You're like, eh. And so and so's over, I wanna make sure I have that. Being very careful not to name actual name brands right now, just because I don't know what the FTC guidelines are. I don't feel like learning the wrong way. Some of this FTC, some of it is HelloFresh asking me very nicely, so. We'll just not name any other brands and call it safe. Genius. Alright, we are back safe. I will sell stuff in just a second, but for now I'm gonna go blow my nose. I will be right back, Bibs will be here.
Okay.
Chat, be good for Bibs.
Or don't. Up to you, completely. Ah, fish! Got it. Ooh, a tuna! Sorry, Sully's not doing anything. Also, I'm like the worst person to like entertain, you know? But here I am, trying my hardest, even though you can't see anything that I'm doing, but I'm back in town and I'm fishing. Oh, thank goodness you're back. Very anxious.
You're doing great.
Thanks, trying. A brim.
Bream?
Yeah.
You're great, Bibs. Proud of you. I believe in you and your fishing, Bibs.
Thanks!
That's just chat, that's just me letting you know what they're saying.
Yeah, and I'm letting them know, thank you. Sorry, I was reeling in a fish. Sorry, I was reeling in a fish and looked down.
I was just letting you know that, that chat's on your team. You're, you're doing good. Oh, uh, so I did have an idea for changing up how channel points worked just a little bit. Uh, rather than having it be, uh, an ongoing like, competition per se, it can be a little competitive, but instead of having it reset every month, having it be a pool that each team can build up to a certain goal amount, and then when that goal amount is reached, they can then redeem. Eyes for that.
That would be fun.
So it creates a little bit more like, cooperation and co- compet- competition, like on top of each other, like, uh, the coopetition as, uh,
Co-opetition!
As Borderlands 3 kind of coined it, uh, but just an idea, yeah. And then the, the idea is then I would be able to make like the cursed items and stuff like that, more so based on when people redeem it and when chat kind of wants it, as opposed to being like, no, we're, we're happy with the, the cursed items we have currently, and, uh, we're good. Alright, cool. No problem now. I think I got the hiccup somehow. Uh, go ahead and sell any of this that I don't need. Okay. Uh, 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 that is the tool chest, ah. Oh. I will put the omelet in with the chocolate cake. That seems, yeah. Adventurer food. Like a perfect place.
Hey, you see that we just completed a bundle?
Ooh, hey, look at that!
Uh, three crab pots.
A pot?
Heck yeah!
I will make sure to stop by. Which one was that that you did? Was it the purple, the blue flower?
What?
Purple, the blue.
Blue.
Ooh, nice. Which one was that? Was that ocean fishing?
Um...
Looks like. Yeah, nice. Good job, bibs.
Thanks.
Checking everything, organizing everything. Trying to relearn. Just I need to go turn in the bundle. Remind.
Oh, maybe the apricot too. The little...
Ah!
Yeah, I was like, crud, did I sell that? Because sometimes...
I'll, I'll see if it needs to get turned.
Sometimes I just do silly goofy things. It'd be the artisan bundle.
Okay, okay. I'll, I'll go check in the morning for now.
Yeah, it's 10:30. I'm doing one last pitch.
Thank you.
And then heading back that way. Pitch? Yes!
Again. Actually, I sold some clay, but I think we'll be okay with that.
Yeah, no, we're good. I don't think we're trying to build anything with clay right now, because we don't need a well, because our water source is relatively close to our thing, and then we have a ton of sprinklers.
We also have nineteen clay already, so like, can't imagine if we're not currently crafting with it. Uh, let me see what all clay has even like oh wow, you know, like the stuff that I would expect to have in it, right?
I'm like...
Uh...
I can sell all these fish I just bought.
Currently, nothing. It might be that you had to refine it into something and, oh, actually do something, but as of right now, it doesn't look like I see anything that we use clay for.
Oh, I meant like the big building.
Oh, that's right, that's how it gets used. I actually forgot about that. Awesome, thank you. Uh, it is midnight. Howdy, welcome in friend. Happy sponsor stream. Oh, yeah. It keeps me safe.
It's gonna rain tomorrow.
Ooh! Beards are very happy today. See how they do tomorrow. I really wonder if, uh, you can kind of get ahead of yourself and, uh, by checking the night before, after midnight, or if it still counts as...
I don't know.
Uh, oh, I can make tapper.
Nice!
Got it. Level three foraging.
I think I also can make tappers.
Heck yeah, ooh, look at that money!
Yeah, that was very good.
That's good money. A lot of it came from fishing and foraging, so we're killing it.
Nice. A lot of that came from the seeds we were...
Ooh, cool.
Ooh, spreading weeds. And...
Yes.
Are somewhat annoyed today. What's not gonna be on our side?
Alright, we'll keep that in mind. It is raining though, so collecting. So collecting is gonna just be all we have to do for our farm.
No gold star melons, though. So that bundle might have to wait, which sucks, because it's a greenhouse bundle. The faster you get the greenhouse done. The faster you prevail!
Uh, when was the last time we baited our crabs?
Um, I don't know. I put some more crab pots in the silver chest for you.
Awesome, awesome, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna sell these regular hops.
Okay.
Ooh, spooky.
Uh, I feel like somebody likes some of this stuff, and that's part of why we have one of these.
Yeah, probably.
That would make more sense.
Oh, do we need a regular melon?
I think we put the, oh.
Hang on. Uh, okay, there's a regular melon in there now for you.
Cool. I will grab that for the box as well. Do we already have hot peppers turned in, do you know?
Yes, I do believe so. If not, um...
What bundle would it be in?
Um, summer. I think.
All crops, air quality. Summer, here we go. E, we already have peppers turned in.
Okay, good.
But we need tomato and melon, so I'll take those both in.
Okay, and then I do believe we have a blueberry plant. That shouldn't be done soon.
Uh, we already have apricot turned into the artisan bundle.
Okay.
We're already good there. We need to get either a thing of cheese, honey, jelly, oil, or an orange, a peach, or a pomegranate.
Okay, I'll keep my eye on the fruit cave.
Yep, yep, yep. Animal bundles, we need to get eggs of all sorts, wool, or any kind of milk.
Okay, yeah, but they have to be large eggs.
See if you need it in it, it'll make it, oh, that.
Oh, we need to save up for, um, a cow barn, a cow barn.
Oh, that is so helpful.
Oh, if you just hover over it.
You just hover over it, it'll like pulse.
Oh, if we need to turn it in?
Yep, so I'll grab the wheat.
I come back to clear for it.
Thank you, Ray, freaking fifty, fifty points to whatever team, uh, you, you prefer. And I will add it after stream because copyright. No, no, that is not a, a sorry moment. That is absolutely a thank you moment. Very much so. Me a lot of time. Grab one of everything I need and go turn in without checking the list back and forth sixty-seven times.
Yeah, and then we can sell everything else.
Much, yeah.
Until we get like preserves and stuff. Well, some of the preserves aren't really worth the weight in terms of like gold to like what their actual product's worth. If that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We could probably turn apricot. Probably stuff.
Uh, yeah, or wine. We can turn it into wine once we get a keg.
Say green? Cool, yeah. Fifty points to green too, in honor of Ray. Those zombies. Put it in for refinement. Did you potentially sell our regular hops, or am I just carrying the only two we've ever carried?
Oh, no, I did sell our regular hops, because our hops will regenerate, so I just went ahead and put some extra stuff in, because...
Okay, well, I'm just gonna go ahead and grab one and, oh wait, you can't even turn hops in. Or we already turned hops in, so. Need worry about nothing.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about that barn. Guys hear that really scary rumble?
I think it's thunder.
It's kind of spooky through my headphones.
Oh, I bet. I'd imagine our audio traction probably just a little out of sync.
Ooh, iridium grade fish. Get on my level.
Hell yeah.
I love fishing.
Load up some crab pots.
In game and out of game.
Yeah. I'm gonna load up some crab pots and, uh, hopefully make some good.
We should have some bait somewhere.
Yeah, so I was thinking. Um, and if not, I will use dungeonearing to gather some.
Dungeonearing.
I got the crystal dagger. Yeah. Hit you with that six dozen stab. Alright. Summer bundle.
Going fishing down the beach now. Do we need blackberries or spice berries at all?
Uh, that'd probably be
Or...
Foraging things, so I actually got but we need to save
Wild grapes.
Gold of, uh, melon pumpkin.
Yep. And then, uh, grapes.
Uh...
I think that'd be in the
Our snips, we already turned up. For the quality crops run.
Okay.
Gold stars, we just see.
Cool.
Um, but that will be handy for like making gold star, uh, refined things. Dams and wine and stuff.
Uh, that's, they don't get
Oh, really?
Yeah, you can, I mean, you can re-age wine once it's been brewed. You can put it in a preserves jar, but other than that.
All foraging bundle. Looks like we already got blackberries. We need to get hazelnut and common mushrooms.
Okay, what about grapes?
Um... I will have to check the farming bundle.
Um, I think that's gonna be summer foraging, if we don't already have that one, though.
Uh, looks like we already have that one done.
Okay, cool.
We need winter foraging, exotic foraging, construction and fall.
For the grape?
Yeah, uh, nope.
Okay, cool.
That's gonna be the winter root, crystal fruit, snow yam, and crocus?
Okay, cool.
Think the it's probably that we need a whole potion. Yes, bundle, dive bundle, field resource. Yeah, so it's ten wheat, ten hay, three little tougher.
Yeah, we'll just save the apples from our fruit cave until we can afford fruit trees, because fruit trees, they take an entire season to grow. And then they only spawn fruit certain seasons. So, I mean, we could look at a fall one, like, um, like in the winter, we could look at some spring ones. And, but trees have a specific plant pattern, like they can't have stuffed two spaces in any direction around. So we would have to go find a spot and dedicate it.
Any other bundles you want me to check?
Um... I don't think so, no.
Okay. Uh, we're really close. I mean, we can afford the ten thousand bundle if we want to, but we can also continue
I have four iridium fish in my pockets right now.
We're about to make a bunch, wow.
Yeah, so we a hundred percent could. Like, we're doing really good.
Okay, uh, we only need fire quartz for the geologist bundle.
Okay.
Uh, ah, blacksmith bundle. Turn in the iron bar. Now we just need a gold bar over here. Uh, we'll probably get that soon-ish. And then the other things we need to get like stacks of, like bat wings, uh, wheat, hay.
Our next lucky day, we should go to the mine together, so we can clear a bunch of floors. Oh, that was a jumpy fish.
Alright, back to the farm. Like tomorrow, I'll go adventuring some, try to gather the rest of what we're working on. Go ahead and sell this pepper real quick. Basic quality. Crab pots. No, we have some. There it is. Oh, seventy-two bat wings. Gonna load up on those. Kind of those. We got three gold ore. I think we need five to smelt. Okay, so we're real close. Now, we have refined quartz. We have regular quartz. We don't have fire quartz sitting in here. That's good that we didn't forget to do that. Uh, dinosaur egg that we can apparently turn in, dumper.
I wanna put it in the chicken coop, though.
Oh.
That's why we haven't turned it in yet, because if we put it in the chicken coop. Yeah, but once you have a dinosaur, they produce dinosaur eggs.
Oh, and then we can just turn one and go there.
Yeah, and you can turn dinosaur mayonnaise in. Also, I'm
Dinosaur mayonnaise?
Yeah.
Ew.
Hey.
I keep that, you can bring
Um, I'm getting ready to head up to the community center to check my fish stock. Do you want me to purchase the ten thousand bundle?
Uh, yeah, you can. I'm also headed over there myself real quick, just to turn in these bat wings real quick.
Okay, well, one of us will get to it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was gonna look for any like near or in-town fishing spots. Crab pots.
Uh, you should put one up in the, eh... Not the cave, the mountain area.
Like up by the entrance to the dungeons?
Yeah.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Okay.
I can do that.
None of my fish were
That happens.
Ready, so I'm gonna purchase the bundle.
I go ahead.
Oof, hurt a little bit.
Just a little bit, but
Ooh, but a lightning rod? I'm gonna go place that on the farm.
And then once we get all of the, the bundles done, the, the money bundles done, we get the bus repaired.
Oh, yeah.
That'll be huge.
Yeah, because then we can, on, um, like, super happy days, we can go tag-team the ca, uh, the skull caverns. I really struggled with the skull caverns a lot, on like my personal playthrough.
Adventurers, uh, one done. Oh, yeah. And we just got two small magnet rings.
Heck yeah. Magnet rings are really awesome. I wear two in my main.
I'm just wearing a regular one, so I'm gonna add a small one, and then I'll give you the other one. Skull cavern's arbor. Need, do you need help with that, buddy? Alright, no, I think he's got it, alright. Let him do his job. Oh, I can gift Sebastian a crab pot. Yeah, not my intention. I thought that. Up here real quick. Am I gonna find a bibs fishing over here?
No, I'm back at the farm.
Alright. Good crab pot, good crab pot, crab pot. Just put them right, right by each other, it's easy to keep. We should probably upgrade our tools, because we, we haven't really done that.
Yeah.
I should at least, I mean, we should probably both at least, uh, upgrade our pickaxes, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, that would be my main goal of the mines, is just collecting a lot of copper, so I'll stay
Okay.
What is it, like twenty to forty for copper best?
Uh...
Cause like the first, the first twenty.
Yeah. Hey, it's getting late.
I'm almost up. Running as fast as I can. What is it, 1 AM or 2 AM then it cuts off? I think it's Okay, for some reason, I always assume one and try to get in bed before then, but then everybody's like, you know that time? Like, oh, oh.
But I don't trust you.
I don't trust you.
Ooh, do we have?
What? Yep. Where's the rest of our oh, do we have it anywhere? No, so this was our only piece. Bibs, go to bed.
I'm going.
It's twelve fifty.
I'm going.
Better hope it's two. Yeah, it's one, because now it's starting to, it's two, so it's, Violet shakes it one.
Give me a heart attack.
That Violet shake was your like last, last warning. Okay. Ooh.
A fairy!
A fairy? On my farm? More likely than you'd think.
Hey, we have blueberries to turn in now.
So is that just gonna like instantly bloom everything we have growing?
I don't know.
Oh. Well, thank you, fairy. How much money? It will! Awesome! That's wonderful. Mail. Hey kid, my throat's about as dry as desert bone. I'm real thirsty for a pale ale. You got one? Regular old beer won't do any pale ale. Ham was. Oh, battery pack.
Yeah, from the lightning rod.
Oh.
That's why I wanted to get it down. Oh, it's staffroot.
Heck, yeah, dudes. Think all of our other stuff, oh, sorry. Oh, these ones are, some of these are frickable. Crazy, really? Okay, yeah. Until you get too, until their property won't. And fresh stuff planted?
Yeah, sunflower seeds from the sunflowers are picked.
Hmm. That's bought up in case you wanna plant there too.
I don't have any more seeds on me.
Alright. We are good for today, cuz these are all in sprinkler range, I believe.
Yeah.
Sprinkler here, oh. Uh, are these four getting watered?
Yeah, they should be.
Oh, wrong button. Okay. Oh, okay, I see that one's getting from that one. That one's getting from that one. I just can't see you. We're facing, but we're fine. Uh, let me check to see how we're doing on copper. A bar. Pizza, yeah, so I'm gonna definitely need to focus on copper. We wanna upgrade, cuz we gotta upgrade to copper weapon or copper tools and then iron tool. Then we can clean up both the, the mines and our property.
Yeah. Oh, the, I didn't close the gate and the chickens are in the grass, but they'll be real happy about that, so I'm just gonna leave them.
Eh, not the worst thing.
Yeah, they're not gonna run away. That's what I learned. I learned that the hard way.
I'm gonna put this magnet ring box for you, so you can have two.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. If you only have one right now, then you can have one.
Oh, no, I have two on my personal game.
Gotcha, gotcha. That should be good to go, so I'm gonna go ahead and head to the.
Okay, cool. I'll be up there in a sec.
We're also getting really close to the bottom of the mine, so hopefully, once we upgrade tools, it'll be a really quick finish.
Yeah, that's always the best. This stuff out of drain? Rightish grab one.
For sure. How else am I supposed to get the trashcan lid hat?
That's true. How else? Ooh, we have stuff in our crab pots up by the mines.
Oh, that's. I'm coming back.
Ooh, and I think one of those we can put in a bundle.
Grab those on the way back through the inventory.
Yeah.
I'm going in looking for copper and fire quartz.
Okay, I'm going down further.
I'm gonna go down, I'm gonna start at fifteen and then move down from there.
Oh, he threw a bone at me. Not an incredulous thing to do.
Have any ore? Yet. Copper ore, maybe just a bad load. On my behalf. Down. Probably closer. Want to start a little, in case. The guy is rushing me. Ready? Is that not hurting him? A rock. Get stabbed, dude. Didn't think my only solution was the pickaxe, dude. Nah.
God, this is not my day down here. I should come up to a couple. I should get out of here, actually, just. Okay, well, that was a short-lived experience. I'm gonna take these down to the community center, cuz I need to stay out of the mines. Oh, I picked up.
It's a bad day, it's a bad day, you know?
Yeah, this wasn't my day.
Ah, here we go, there's some copper. Uh. Uh, hey, some more alchemy, that's. Action health and energy room. Copper and iron on this. No quartz, might. I'll find a fire court. That might be.
Those are down lower.
Had a few.
Yeah, um, we're on level seventy-five of the mines, so I'm definitely gonna need a pickaxe upgrade before we go down there.
That's. We're down here. The interest. Early exit. Hey, made one out of the enemy. Alright, like that. I like the dagger, little itty-bitty range on it, really, really need its courage. Sometimes you just, you just gotta get it. Go with that. Them six times in the face. Bugs don't tend to like me. Ooh, geo. Uh, I've definitely broken geodes open before. Guess I've just never discovered one for myself? Back. Even my mining will level up or something. What the? Doesn't look pleasant at all. Mess with this. Oh.
Oh, heck, yeah. Walked to the beach, found a seer chain. We need that for one of our bundles.
Chewing stick and cherry bomb. Artifact. Okay. Now let's go through about it. Not sure what that thing that kept popping out of the sand. That's on. Oh, nope. Nope. Ooh, good job, bibs.
Yeah.
Ooh. Nope. Nice. More copper to get. I got energy. Keep moving. Ooh. Won't alright. I know, G. I broke. Give me treasure.
It's eleven twenty.
Yeah, I'm on my way back. Let's see if any of these all. Move quick, move quick. Two hours, which is roughly a hundred and eighty seconds?
Did you say we needed a blackberry?
Uh, I don't believe so. I think we already had that one turned in. Yep, I know. No, I'm coming. Oh, still out of order. Gotta fix those up some point. No. I don't want it to be a close call. Yeah, I'm safe and sound. Ooh, sixty seconds?
Run!
I run as fast as I can.
Destroy him, bitch.
My little legs. My little legs. Alright, we made it. We're alright.
Woo!
Only a little worrisome. Thirty seconds spare. Oh! We've earned a total of fifty thousand.
Nice.
That's fast.
That's cuz you're playing with a champ.
Oh, you're right. You're so right.
Give me my microphone so I can cookie.
Yeah, go ahead. There you go. Heck, yeah. Comes in loot. I'm in there. Find that later. And with the rest. Grab out this. Grab out the whole stack. Over. Alright, cooking it up. Buddy. Get some water. After stuff all the barley, not the barley, the hops. Mine quartz. That we made out of trash. Here. Got every gunter. This, most cool. I think, I think we're good. I think it's just five bars, right? Also stop by and hopefully see Clint and drop off my pickaxe. And I'll trade you pickaxes. You can take this one deeper if you'd like, or I can take this one. Uh, and you can get yours upgraded, uh, after copper that way, but, anyway. We'll have one upgraded pickaxe, by the way. Will take a couple days. That is the downside, that does steal your axe for a little bit. Yeah, but he's a helpful thief, though. We'll allow it. Don't return it. That trash. Woody, oh, copper pickaxe, yeah, five and two thousand. Thank you much. Yeah, the coinage will be able to afford, cuz we've been making that at least every day. And, uh, just a couple days to back this up. Chewings. Well, I'm gonna put this with the dwarven stuff. Kinda matches the motif. I just poured water to his desk. Now.
Am I doing the thing?
Doing the thing? Yeah.
Yeah.
I think I'm just gonna fish.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing today. That's the vibe I was feeling was fishing.
I think I'm gonna check all my crab pots, all they're having.
Um, I'm up by the mountain right now, so all of these are good, but they need more bait.
Yeah, yeah, I'll bring more bait out that way.
Okay, cool. I'm gonna head to the beach after this.
Okay. I'll be safe.
Yeah, I can't swim.
By the mountain, do we have any crab pots at the beach?
Hmm, I don't think so, no.
Okay, just double check while you're down there.
I will.
Awesome.
This is my last cast up here, and then I'm going to go down to the beach.
Heck, yeah. Heck yeah. I'm gonna come bait those. Blow my nose. Something, mountain spot.
Okay.
Just so bad, I'm not sniffing here.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Have fun.
I will.
Did I bait this?
I baited one of them I had.
Oh, okay. Yes, it doesn't show it as baiting on my screen, but... It's not letting me bait it, so I have to...
Yeah. Sorry. I forgot.
Hold on, I'm blowing my nose for just a second. Didn't expect to face it. Sparkles. Woo! Get a rainbow trout!
Oh, heck yeah.
Didn't get this one. Fish. Ain't getting away from me. You ain't getting away from me! Another rainbow trout! Do you need those? Nope. Those would be good money. Heck yeah. I'll be right back. I'm just gonna bring two. Turn, now blow my nose into the microphone.
Ugh. Sometimes I have to get rid of my perfect cast for a treasure chest, and it's... Yeah, if I got two magma geodes.
Those could have fire ports in them.
Yeah, they could.
Save us, uh, the whole journey. There we are.
Oh, I caught a flounder.
Hey, Gratz! Good job. You didn't, uh, flounder your cast.
I did not.
Oh, dang it. Got a noise to take out. Whoa. That fish came, I don't think. Eight swinging. Oh, good, okay. Oh, Lord. There we go. It was trying to hang out near the bottom of the water there. Oh. Oh, too far. There we go. Just before it faded too, no? Still there. I just laid it right in the middle of it. Perfect. A carp, thirty inches in length. Gold star.
Nice.
Little dark, but we'll keep fishing for just a little bit. That's been good to... You know, speaking of, I love Fresh actually has some awesome pescatarian and just like fish-centered items that I... Right, I'd say that kind of as a joke, but also kind of unironically, because I really like a lot of fish-related dishes, and I saw a lot of like... Salmon and shrimp and stuff like that, that sound delicious.
I am very excited too. I, especially because I don't always like, like, repairing some fish fillets, like, some need more prep than others, and I'm just... Not really about that life. It's kinda gross.
Despite how many times we've watched the video of how to, uh, debone and prepare every kind of fish ever, um... Doesn't always mean that we're, we have it stored in the active memory, and it's something that we can immediately access, so...
I just got a super cucumber, cucumber, elvish jewelry, and a rusty spoon.
That's pretty cool. I didn't know there were elves in the lore of this world. I knew there were dwarves. Yeah, I knew there were dwarves, but I...
And wizards.
Guess it makes sense.
And witches.
Who is this, like, some sort of fantasy world that has just become modern and just happens to have some magic, but like...
Ooh, that guy was fast.
Magic isn't as common anymore?
No, don't do this to me. I want this fish. What is it? No! Ah! Always happens.
You're doing great.
Thanks. I was doing really bad.
Uh, full check. Doing a quick hover check. Oh, need that chub. Sell the rest. Perfect. Over by the community center real quick, because we've got a couple hours.
While you're over there, will you tell me what fish we still need?
Uh, yeah. I know we need a chub, but I'm gonna go turn one in, so we will not need that anymore. It's a silly name. I love it. I'm not even trying to make fun of it. I genuinely just like, oh, what we call this guy? Uh, let's call him a chub. Alright, where's the... There are a couple like that. Carp. Carp is very similar. But chub's just a little bit funny.
What about a crappie?
Hmm, that's pretty, that's pretty close, because as a kid, when you see it, you're like, haha, I'm catching, I'm catching crappy, and that's hilarious. Here, I don't care who you are. I don't care who you are, that's funny right there.
That's funny right there.
That fish, tiger trout, badge, sunfish. Here do you go! Lake fish. Add one of these two. Those two. Might not be a fish? Bundle that requires it? Okay, uh, we need catfish and tiger trout for the river fish bundle.
Okay.
We need pufferfish and sandfish for the specialty fish bundle.
Okay.
Uh, we need sturgeons for the lake fish bundle.
Yeah.
And then we need walleye and eels for the night fishing.
Okay.
Bundle. Um, should I go somewhere else? Getting confused. I was getting late. Come on. Oh, it's a field research. There you go, buddy.
I got scared.
Sorry. I just, I figured out what it was and got excited. I'm, I'm very happy about it. Get the chub turned in. Home, get some sleep. I think it's like two days that Clint needs your pickaxe to get it done.
Uh, two or three, yeah.
Yeah, so I will go fishing again tomorrow. That probably returned to the mines, or if you would like, you can take the pickaxe and you can go to the mine.
Um, we can go together.
Sure.
And do coverage and whatnot. I put, um, the artifacts and three geodes in here.
Awesome, awesome. Appreciate it. I will make sure to check those. Make sure to go see.
I am.
Yeah, I'm going to, real quick, just slightly lower my audio filter on that, so that it plays a little nicer. Anything else? There we go. Excellent easier now. And it makes a little better. At least I think it does. Bring it down even. Doesn't seem to. Oh, actually, it seems... Testing, testing. There we go. I thought, I don't... That's total... Problem. Awesome. Starfrost actually blew their chat.
We turned in the tomato, right?
Uh, I believe we did. Believe we did turn in the tomatoes.
Did we turn in the blueberry yet?
That... No, grabbing.
Okay.
Uh, do we need to turn in a starfruit? No, it's not currently pulsing. Uh... Oh. Gold corn, I think we need ten of them, right?
Yeah.
Uh, that's tough. Okay, let me double check. That's the quality crop bundle. Uh, yeah, we need five. Ooh. We will save out, but we'll do it. Uh... Uh... She dropped me. Oh, that's not cool. I'll turn those in. Go ahead and get those processed. That's a good deal. Uh-huh. I'm gonna take a Jojo Kola out just in case I run into, uh... Sam? I think it's Sam.
Uh, yeah, maybe Goku.
Yeah, maybe Goku. Now, outside of nicknaming your favorite NPC that sometimes you forget their actual name.
Yeah, sometimes.
Alrighty. This would be... A five trashcater. Oop, nothing in there. Ooh, cool. Nice. Nope. No, just levels. Still working on your copper pickaxe. We're ready to. I wanted you to work on geodes. Alright, I'll hold on to it. Heard. Gunther. Opposite side, but also... Gotta be so close to room. Feel it. Can't be, but... Order two donation. Ooh. Uh, need to make, stop by the community center real quick. Fishing. Uh... Pantry. Yes, blueberry. That's summer bundle done.
Nice.
Board a quality sprinkler.
Oh, heck yeah.
Waters the eight adjacent tiles everywhere. Yeah, why the build a little plot around that one? This looks happy. Alright. Yeah, good. They're cruising. Look, we're already back up to ten K.
Yeah, easy peasy.
The last one, fifty K or a hundred K?
A hundred K, I think. But if we ever wanna upgrade Pam's house, it's fifty K. I did that in my personal save file. It was fun to add to the story.
Hope we can also put Linus in some... Too.
Um, I don't know. I don't think so.
Hmm. Maybe he prefers more of like a pioneers than type lifestyle. I don't know.
Or maybe... It's just not his time yet.
Yeah, maybe one point six of the time. I hope there's more story stuff for Linus, point six. There's a little bit like out the gate with, with the regular Stardew, but I'm really hoping... It encourages you to interact more. Large mouth bass. I feel like we might need that, but I'll check. Ah, just a little bit.
Lost my fish.
You're doing great.
Thanks.
Fish.
Son of a knack.
Yeah, dang it. Going for the treasure and I lost it all. There's supposed to be, I believe, at least a little bit. Okay.
Where the freaking fishes stinker? Uh, not what I meant.
Ooh, bullhead, new record. Eh? Ooh, a carp. He won inches. Dang, it's huge! Gold! Out for any little lucky spots? Nope. Oh, fishy. Oh, fishy fishy fishy. Yeah. Another carp. You gonna be rolling in mine. Gimme. I got a bullhead again. Probably caught very many, definitely. Hit me. Yeah. From a technical point, yeah, yeah, this is my favorite little island, because if any of the little lucky spots appear, kinda just be like, ooh, run over here, ooh. Over here, or if you like see it over on one of the shores, you can run over to that shore. Then otherwise, you're just, you're just comfortable. Like, if this were an island in real life, I would also just be like, yeah, let me go on that little... Uh, little isthmus there and just fish out on this little, little beach, all of, all of myself, this beach that only fits one person. Love it. A technically perfect fishing spot.
You said we needed sunfish, though?
Uh, I'm not sure. I'll have to check.
I'm not.
I think it was sandfish, but...
Yeah, I think you're right.
Uh, there is a possibility it's sunfish, so worth a check. Bundle. Fish tank. Uh, walleye and eel. Catfish and tiger trout. Surgeon and sandfish and pufferfish.
Okay.
Okay. Um, wow, I got an iridium carp. Holy crap.
Nice. That's gonna be good money.
Holy carp. Ho, 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 ho. Blame. Don't even ask for a dad joke there.
I did secretly.
Oh, okay, okay.
I love dad jokes.
Otherwise, near the cave, close to the bridge, ooh. Have to check that one out. Like the, the cave just up top?
Yeah.
Awesome, awesome. I will have to check that one. I'm having a good time fishing. Love games with fishing mini game. If it's helpful to my friends for me to just spend everyday fishing, then I'll do that. They should make fishing a little bit more entertaining in like MMOs that wanna encourage professions. I think I would probably have way more fun with the WoW profession system if it was just a tiny bit more... What's the thing? Like, I'm a sucker for Warcraft. I'll always come around and play it every once in a while, but... If I could be just a little bit more engaged in like fishing and then the cooking or something, give me like a little timer mini game or a little like, like this, like a little wait mini game. Simple. But I get it. Ooh, gold chub. Heck yeah. Inventory all filled up, so we'll just head home back for it. Hate the ones at home, because I think I'm gonna forget to do that. How you doing, goo?
Good.
Heck yeah. What you working on?
Fishing.
Oh, shoot. We're just a bunch of fishing fools out here.
Nah.
Mm-hmm. You're sitting on the dogger to be... Wasting time. Oh yeah, good. My brain operated too many miles per hour, hmm, maybe. Hmm, maybe. Doesn't matter right now.
Eh, yeah, we're good.
Yeah, well. We don't really, like unless we're intentionally trying to sell. Uh, I'm gonna hold on to iridium gray stuff just, just in case.
Okay, I mean, it's just a good money boost right now.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I mean, let me, let me don't check that we don't need any of these for our bundles, but then otherwise. Think I'm wondering. You know, we're golden. Heck it.
Heck it.
Money in the park. Didn't my source. Yes. I'm calling it is good to hold on to for, yeah. Range display. Alright. Well, I will continue to get better and better at fishing. Now we'll, we'll just make a little extra money and get through the year, we're just using this file to prep for 1.6, no. Um, I don't know where to place those. We'll rearrange. Oop, had to bait my lungs, I still got time. Move, move, move. Taking me up. Alright, we'll also have to make sure to stop by plants and make sure that, uh, pickaxe ready. Does, and the pickaxe off to bibs processing. Turn to fishing. That's a fault of, yeah, yeah, we got plenty of time. Okay. Thank you for letting us know, though, very helpful. Ooh, my copper pickaxe is ready, okay, cool, so you don't need to check, it'll give you a little pop-up, don't need to annoy the crap out of that department.
The spirits are in good humor if you want to take the geodes with you when you go over.
Hmm, yeah, yeah, I mean, I was probably going to anyway.
And you can take the other pickaxe too, if we have enough.
Uh, I don't think we have enough copper bars.
We have, oh, not copper bars, but we have. You could immediately go put that through silver, though, we have enough.
Yeah, yeah, we could get it up to iron already.
Yeah.
Um.
You want me to go to the mines?
Um.
And we're looking for copper, right?
Work my jargon down. What?
Hello?
I must've missed the exact timing of that. Or not gotten it, but, oh no. Better they were playing ascension and they went. That's not the case. Hope they're doing great if they're playing any ascension right now. No, no, you're not at all annoying for no. Dude, more than welcome to be here and it's more helpful than you realize. Please. Ramble away. Ah, gotcha, gotcha. Oh, our, okay, yep, I'm remembering the name now. Um, that's like, that's like third or fourth dungeon, right? That's like as far as we've gotten, I thought. That might be crazy, but for some reason I'm remembering that being, yeah, third, heck yeah. Good job, guys, zooming through. Good luck, good luck on the next ones. Hopefully we can take some time during the week at some point to, uh, run some trio. But good luck to you guys in your, your parallel layer. That's, that's the hard one, honestly. It is, I mean, it's just that, like, at early. Copper pickaxe, ble, bleoka. Geodes. One. Two. Whoa. Got a dwarf gadget. Guess good humor doesn't always mean that they like ya. Um, artifact. Reward, yes, I knew we were close. It is? Nine pumpkin seeds.
Oh, that'll be good for next season. I'll come pick mine up tomorrow.
Have 18 pumpkins out the gate, one of those has got to turn out gold, oh, and I just got a geode out of Gunther's trash. Spirits are in good favor today, gotta go start tracking trashcans. Track that open, buddy. Eh, iron, hey, I'll take it, it was trash iron, man, it was free. Hang on, complain. Vikings accidentally inventing steel with bog iron? In the what, like, century and after that? For some reason, they pull all this metal out of old swamp. Just let it melt down with all of that, uh, other material that's kind of stuck to it. The words kind of come out stronger, and we add blood to it. And, uh, yeah, we accidentally invent steel, oops. Dude, alright. As a bit of a nerd, I kind of wish there was more of a scientific process to it, but hey, you know, that's also cool. Uh, some origin? Needs plant. Place in the box. Yeah. That would do. I'll throw the copper pickaxe in the gray chest and just leave the, the regular one, and I will work on gathering materials, getting upgraded.
Okay, I'm in the mines right now.
Kind of bored of. Fair enough, what's a board of fishing? Another one. How you feeling about preparation for 1.6 so far, feeling ready?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is you think that's just like ready from excitement, or do you think like you're also just like, you've played so much of Stardew that you're like?
No, I think it's just from excitement, because I could play Stardew for hours.
Right, right, right. Uh, there, there's some games that just do really well at being cozy and always having some research to do when you get into them. Some of them are a little limited, like on, like how much they give you each time that you log in? Like Animal Crossing is great about kind of limiting you daily rounds. Hey, you can do this many things, but like, unless you want to be some time traveler, like you're not gonna get everything done on your island, dude. You get a certain number of things done, have your, I, I think, I think it was Doug Doug used metaphor of the, like, the cup of coffee. But yeah, that's, that's perfect.
Or you could literally go have your cup of coffee with rooster.
You know what, that's a good point.
If you're at that level.
Yeah, and honestly, that's a great thing. Skill issue, I can finish the whole one. See, it's not a matter of a skill issue, it's a matter of like, if that's how you do it, you're probably not enjoying Animal Crossing, like, as animal. Uh, also said I was gonna check out tomorrow's spots, I'll get this first and then.
Like my first New Horizons, uh, playthrough, I played in real time, and then when I decided to scrap my island. Because I had hit completely.
Yeah, that's, that's slightly different as well. Fish is fast, whatever it is, goodness gracious. One more time. Arten, ooh, come on. It's not moving, I got one going. I was ready to move fast, and that's like, yeah, I'm gonna chill out down here. Hang out without a bat, dude. Maximum effort. Perfect. Bullhead. Perfect. Kind of expected this lucky spot to disappear, but fast one again, dang it. The particular fish there. It keeps evading. Who, who's eating?
Me. I just came out of mines.
It's like, am I just pull a fish out of the water, start camping on it?
Jump, jump.
All Sméagol style? Your ruins is a. I bet it's this button.
No, it's the spot that I'm on right.
Oh, okay. But this spot's good, though, have faith. I'll catch some weird radioactive fish, red. Wrench. It's a good board game. Hey, without you. That brush right? Yeah, 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 maybe it's not that good. Try this button. Perfect cast on it. Feel like that'd be good, hey? We'll get it, we'll get it. Where's fish? Fishy. Goodness. Like this. Nice quick hits. Just stay centered on. Fish, get closer to the box. I don't know why it's easier to stay tracked on the fish than the. There you go. Cut it. Not a newbie. Let me see that treasure chest. Oh, eight. A rusty spoon. Plain old spoon, probably 10 years old, not very interesting, oh.
Yeah, we, yeah, sell it. Sell the rusty spoon.
I thought it's called an artifact, but it just straight up is like, this is kind of worthless. Wow, this is worthless. That could have been the whole description. I'm gonna make it pretty easily. I'm already. Outtrack, trash crane, do all my way. Yeah, nope. Check all the good ones.
Wah.
Wah. Wah.
Uh, there's a ton of, uh, copper ore now.
Awesome, thank you.
At least 28.
That is enough for five bars. Are doing great, thank you. Got that geode. That goes in there. Hey, I see a lurking twig. Lurks.
You lurk.
Lurking buddy.
Ooh, level four mining. I can now make a glowstone ring, I'm not sure I know what that is.
Uh, gives you a little bit of like extra light around you for the dark cave sections.
Oh, heck yeah.
Very handy.
Spirits are kind of annoyed.
Ooh, you will, uh, not processed. Low magnet ring as well, and get BES5?
Oh.
It's the BES5. Alright, I'm just, I'm stealing. Oh, and it's the best, ah. Sorry, I thought you said it was in the, no, 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 you're good, I thought it was like in a, like a dungeon that was nicknamed something or something. Like, certain region of a dungeon I hadn't been to. Cause I have, I've done, uh, the, the desert dungeons a little bit, but only a little bit. Best, I'm, I'm fairly but I love it, and it's super vibes, and every time I play it, I want to get through like a whole year. Main problem I ran into. So I don't know a lot of these games, but I have played quite a few out of seven. Plus it is just fresh farm every time. Wish I forgot what I was doing. Yeah, purple hair. It is, it is a great game, and like, ah. Can't help but come back to it and just be like, ah, yeah, feeling comfortable, the best. Eating, yeah, one is cool. Actually, real quick, bibs, time to go. That's. Grab out the coal and the copper. 25? That one to cook. Here we go. Has some copper cooking. Back. Half. Hold on. This support playing with friends, especially.
Yeah.
If you have one focus, then anybody else can kind of take up their little jobs, 100%. Um, I'm not sure how Bibs feel about it, but we could possibly try to get more friends and get like everybody on very coordinated tasks for 1.6.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, cool. That can be very fun for, uh, for learning 1.6 with my friends, just get a farm together and go crazy. We will probably continue to play Stardew and/or other food and farm games every Sunday, uh, as a part of our HelloFresh sponsorship, so if you'd like to be a part of that, uh, give me. Kind of knock out details or whatever, get you connected. Uh. Not sure? Eh, just, just watch along, just hang out and vibe, that's cool. It goes to, to anybody who's sitting along, may play games with me, or who may wish to. I love playing games with just about everybody, but need the invite. You can also make me play Cork Keeper. Does it have a good cooking and/or food-related, uh, mechanic system? That we could teach either me and/or Bibs? That's it, that's, that's the only like real requirements for this. On, uh, game ideas. If you ever think about playing maybe some Overcooked or some Cooking Mama at some point? Cause those games are the classic, uh, kitchen experience games, just with very different vibes. Cooking Mama is very comforting and. At least so long as you're doing pretty well, pretty kind. Uh, but, gosh dang it, Overcooked can be a lot more brutal.
Oh, yeah.
Especially if you have that one person on your team who's just a little too overly competitive against a game that you don't necessarily have to do perfectly on. Unfortunately, cooking isn't the most in-depth, ah, gotcha, gotcha, that's fine, that's fine. Um, I will eventually just play Cork Keeper, cause I want to, and it sounds really fun and it looks really cool. It has just a cute little art style I want to learn more about. Uh. As we take on more sponsors and we take on, uh, more like mission, start working with other streamers more, uh, I should be able to stream more often, and more like as a sole focus. That, uh, will actually allow me to play like any number of games more often, spend more time here with you. So, uh, in a, in a less joking sense, it, it's true, it could lead to Cork Keeper, and many other experiences. But the big thing is hoping that my sponsorship works out really well. So, a friendly reminder, if you are just watching along and would like to support, be of the sponsor that we are currently working with, and learn more about HelloFresh from their banner and. Code provided, or just my custom link that is, uh, kind of hidden behind the banner, click the banner. Uh, and you can learn more about HelloFresh and earn, uh, one extra free breakfast item for life while you're signed up for HelloFresh. So if you, like me, have an interest in meal prep and would like to start learning about HelloFresh's menu options, check that out. What do you think? Am I, am I getting pretty good at the, at the segues and the, making it, you know, organic? Cause like I was saying, I am, I am genuinely plugging, um, but also, it's, it's a really big help, like. Having, having a sponsor, uh, the first time ever is just super exciting, and, uh, hopefully, I don't know if you guys have, if I am just letting up. I mean, I'm sure you guys understand. Doing great, hey, look at that. I'll take it. Even if you're flippin' to save my ego, I'll take it. I'm gonna choose to be trusting. We'll find out. HelloFresh will let me know how I did, I'm sure. And if not HelloFresh, there's the stream element, because they have awesome tools for keeping track of everything that's going on, automating all of the different, uh, parts of this, that I don't have to do nearly as much, really, really much. I am catching bigger bass after bigger bass. Cause I'm all about that bass. I can't think of a good two-syllable fish that begins with T. Hmm. I was gonna say I'm all about that bass, no blank, but I just couldn't. Tuna, ah! All about that bash, all that bash. Oh tuna. Moonstone Island, ah! I feel like I've heard the name before, but I'm not sure if it was from you or from someone else, so I will just say that, uh, sounds like an awesome recommendation out the gate, just sounds like a cool name. I'll check it out. I will, uh, I'll write it down real quick. And I will go, yeah. Probably had some friends who played or something like that, but. I don't know. My friends who play just about like every genre of game, uh, including those that I. Let me write that down real quick, I have sticky notes. Uh, I have my note cards in here, so. Card. Grab this pen. Waste tomorrow. Moonstone's cute, eh, I will take cute, that is perfect. Moonstone Island. And roll. It'd be cute, but probably wouldn't be all that necessary. We could catch the butterflies.
Yeah. That would be really good.
I don't know that there'd be any real advantage to it. Like, I guess you could maybe start like a butterfly collection, maybe have a butter, butterfly bundle, but like. Also. He's already including so much in the update, like, I'm, I'm not trying to sound ungrateful, I just think it would be cool. David Diver is less cooking, but you are running a sushi restaurant. I've heard about David Diver, Glegg recommended it, and said that it's hilarious, and yeah, that it's, uh. Exactly that, yeah, a diver who runs a sushi restaurant and just has it out for fish. Papa's Freezer, Freezeria Deluxe, ooh! I could play any of the, the Papa's Food Games, I suppose. Pizza Risa, the Freezeria, the Sandwich Shop? Oh, that opens up so many.
I would sell my soul to play the, um, Amagachi like little street fair town games for the DS again, those had really good.
Hmm.
Cooking games.
Oh, but the Freezeria is on Steam, ah, well, uh, some actual good news that I have, I found a, a browser that allows me to play old-school Flash games. Uh, like any of the, the games you used to play in Browser on any number of websites that I'm not just gonna start naming off.
Oh, the Lemonade Stand game, did you play that one?
Uh, I may have, I may have. Um. Yeah, 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 the, the fantastic news is that, fantastic news, everyone! I have a browser which can play Flash games. Like Fancy Pants Guy. If you know that game, we are automatically best friends, that's just how that works. I had like three friends as a kid who taught me about that game and the, the free Flash game website you could play it on. And, uh, Fancy Pants Adventure, uh, I think it was called, and, and I think there's a sequel to that game. Uh, I remember playing with my younger brother to an extremely ridiculous amount, and I will probably make an, an excuse of some kind, whether it's just like I'm not feeling good one day, or I, I need something to like make me feel better, or whatever it is. Um. I'm, I'm gonna sit down, we're, we're just gonna play Flash game, cause that'll make me feel better, and that's, that's great. Flash, Flash games, but yeah, makes it easier. Um, Flash games were the best, and they're super easy to just like hop into and play for a little bit and be like, oh wow. Some, some nerd in college was just wanted to build a little adventure, and this is the result, this is great. That's like most Flash games, I'll leave it. It's like the perfect, uh, kind of Flash game, too. Like an absolute labor of love, uh, that they spent maybe 30 hours on. Like, wow, this world has in-depth world building and no dialogue. Like, it has dialogue, but it's not. Two people are having opposing monologues. They're going to school for game design, not writing, alright, leave them alone. Wonder if everybody's got it all. Especially if you're making a game to be played for free on the internet. That's kind of like it does a certain. Kind of benevolence in itself, I suppose. Make the night. More recommendations, if you like turn-based games, Slice and Dice by Tan. I do, in fact, really like turn-based games, me and Bibs actually recently got into For the King 2, and hopefully I'll be bringing that to stream sometime. Uh, I'll just have to, I remember the first game had some. Performance issues, so yeah, I'll have to see if the equal is any better.
Yeah.
Would absolutely love to get some more. Uh. Turn-based games. Uh, we're also gonna be starting Baldur's Gate soon, so. Ultimate. Turn-based combat. Indecible. Six-sided oracles? I'm also writing this down while I'm, yeah, bring so. And Cobalt Cool. Really cool. I'll look all these up, and even if we don't get immediately into them, if I start trying any of them in the next year personally, let you know what I think, cause I, I love good game recommendations, thank you always, Rondo. Uh. Ray has already given 50 points to green team, so if you'd like to give 50 points to another team, I did mention, uh, an idea for, uh, kind of changing how we do the team point system, and I'll explain that better during one of our proper streams, but since I can't move around right now. Chat about him too much. Um. But if you'd like to, to pick a team to give 50 points to, that will add up. Uh, simply speaking, we're just not gonna reset at the start of each month, it'll actually be a reset based on, uh, each team reaching a certain goal, so. They, it's 1,000 or 2,000 or 5,000 that we set the goal as, uh, once the team reaches that amount, when they would like to, they can convert it into, uh, a first item or, uh, a custom stream or, you know, XYZ. But rather than making everybody spend them right away, or making everybody decide what the price is gonna be right away, um, we'll just kind of point out who the current leaders are and. Not exciting, but we'll worry about it later. Though I'm not overthinking it. Uh. Got those other two copper bars done, so I'm gonna go get this other pickaxe made. We are lush with cash right now. Yes, I did. There it is. Oh, you put both pickaxes back, thank you. Uh, if you wanna take the copper one out, though, you're more than welcome, I'm gonna go make another one.
Oh, I'm doing stuff around the farm today.
Kinda getting this ready for fall?
Yeah, I guess we are getting close, holy smoke.
Yeah. Kinda zooming out and zoning in. I really hope HelloFresh has brain. It's that my free breakfast item. That'd be dope. I'm pretty sure I get, I, I also, as a part of this much, I think that's part one of the more exciting things for me personally, is that I, I get to get the exact same deal you guys get, even if none of you guys sign up for it, I'm gonna sign up for HelloFresh and try some meal prep stuff.
I'm excited, I'm so excited, I literally have not stopped talking about it.
Yeah, like I was saying, I've, I really hope they have a, a breakfast burrito or something along those lines, because that is my stuff, but I don't typically tend to be much of a breakfast person, tend to be more a person who eats breakfast around like lunch or dinnertime, sometimes even like super late at night, kinda like, uh, certain restaurants used to do, uh, a certain numbered meal. Putting copyright. Don't know what trade work. Come on, what catch you fish? I'mma cook you up. I have also thought about implementing some sort of challenge if we get like later into the month, and it doesn't seem like. Anybody is quite interested doing some sort of, uh, challenge to where every time somebody subscribes to our HelloFresh goal, we do something, but I don't, I don't know how I feel about that, I don't necessarily wanna game the system, I don't want you guys to feel like I'm gaming you, so. For now, just know that if you are interested, options are there, otherwise, it'll just be for me. That I try to eat less garbage. Not sturdy, though, I'm gonna keep eating anything I find in the garbage. Delicious. Energy for fishing. We wasted enough time, Clint's open now, I just didn't wanna immediately rush in. Then he wouldn't be. Grab pot set. Geode, how are the spirits today?
Oh, I didn't check.
That's alright, we'll risk it. Be something cool. Sometimes you don't try to measure fate, you only test it. Or something like, I don't know, I'm just trying to sound cool.
Something like that.
Yeah. Stop staring at your trash can, try to steal from it. Feel like there's a sneak hiding in the very back of my head, and it's gonna appear like out of nowhere, it's not ready. Back in my. Oof. There you go. Cute. Now I can't talk to Clint for two days. Oh, I'm not, I shit of the geo. I'm trying to blow him out of it. Oh, yeah, devil. Actually, that's a better place. Have the worst nose when it comes to allergy season. It was like my, my nose and like the top of my, like, right where feels like my voice, like, at least my, like, my daily talking voice, my up here voice, as opposed to like. Chest voice, my lower. And br- 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 register, uh, this voice up here in my head feels like. It, it goes out the moment allergies come in, just gets a little raspy, and then. I'm just stuck down here, and I sound like this for three days, and I'm like, oh god, I'm sorry, guys. Weird imitation of my own voice, but, uh, fairly accurate. By the measure that I did, my own voice. Give me the. Game just sounds so nice and peaceful. I had turned away for just a half second, just to see how, what Bibs was doing. Heard it. You fishy fishy. Thing. Hmm. But the perfect was too good. Woo, an iridium quality ram. Woo, an iridium quality rainbow trout. Yeah, it was worth. It was worth getting the perfect. Not even me. How you feeling? How you doing? Good deal, good deal. How many more days you wanna go uh, before we all stream today?
I don't know.
Alright, uh, you wanna go today and then one more or two more?
Uh, six.
Cool. We will call it there. We'll just run outro and say goodbye for today and we will see you guys later in the week. Everybody done? Don't know how I'm supposed to. Frustrating. I don't think I'm Walk at an angle. Dang you game. Unless from down here, I can super cast it out there? No, not even then. Huh. That's odd. I really don't know what the game wants me to do about that.
Sometimes you don't
Yeah.
Just a gig at few.
Sometime. But I want my fishy. Perfect. Perfect, perfect, perfect. I'm a wolf. Yep. Ooh, is that gold? Ooh, gold one. Keep getting record jumps. Those bullheads. In the two, like, day stream, I've caught, like, new record, new record, new record. I think largemouth bass as well. I keep getting new records. Hey you. There it is. Had a few of those by now, though. You planning on spending the next couple of days at the farm or just today?
Just today.
Okay. Uh, you plan on going back to dungeon or you plan on going fishing? Then I'mma, I'mma do the opposite of whatever.
That's fair. Well.
No worries.
What should I do?
That's, that's, like I said, love, up to you.
The, what is street?
Oh, yeah, yeah, chat. Are you tired of me fishing? Wanna see me dungeon one last time before we get out of here? Or do you wanna watch me fish for the rest of the time? Great question.
Cause my screen's mine. I don't have to share.
Yeah, that's fair. Chat does hang out with my perspective, so that's fair. Do, do whatever you please and brings you joy. Well, I do appreciate your energy, um, but I honestly, unfortunately. Let's get some more than that. Get bullied. Ah. But, fair enough. Help, help, I'm being bullied.
Oh no.
In the Twitch chat, I volunteered to stay in. With the friends who I make inside jokes with almost every stream. Hey, would you like me to mute you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I did, I just noticed uh, that your mic was detecting all that. You're good, you're good. I'm serious, dungeon diving is probably a fun way to fish up?
Yeah.
Okay. I will go dungeon diving if you don't mind going fishing.
Yeah.
Cool, cool, cool. Grab the pickaxe. Also true, also true. Well, we're gonna be down a pickaxe, so one of us would basically be like bodyguarding for the other one, which isn't a terrible idea, but it can be a little difficult. Ooh, level six fishing, let's go. Alright, so yeah, that's a great place to, to pause on the fishing and go dungeon-ing the rest. Oh yeah. Let Bibs catch up a little bit in fishing, cause I seem to be the expert at that around here. She's muted, she can't talk crap. Heh heh heh. Oh. A meal. Gathering date on the correlation between soil. Oh, well, shoot. I talk crap. I effed around and I found out. I'm gathering data in the correlation between soil alkalinity and crop fruit dose levels. Long story short, I need a fresh melon from your farm. If you brought me, I'd be very grateful. She's actually level seven. I was wrong, champ. I apologize. Uh, done stacking or you would you like? Nah, we need a little. Nope, that's cool. Just wanted to check. Those in. Those. Uh, very good, but we have a ton of it. You planning on using green algae for anything? Cool, yeah. Put it around as a food resource. Mostly I bait while I'm down in the mine. Yeah, okay. Inventory? Probably won't. Probably give it to Sam, but that's fine. Right. I'm off to the mines, dear. Don't die, that's a thousand dollars we have to go to Marlin if I can, oh, she says. You're right. You're right. I did. Get a good Two days in, I'm dungeon-ing and Straighten out, honestly. Seventy-five, we're so close to the water. Rush. Uh. Corner him. These guys are tough. I took the dagger. Yeah, it's probably a fair cha- fair point. Um, cause we probably have more powerful swords than we have a dagger right now. Yeah. I've just been using my crystal dagger forever, cause it's got that uh, crit chance and the speed effect. Oh, that's true. I probably killed enough monsters to get a weapon. Thank you. Yeah. So right, proven adventurers is only. Oh, have I not? I've only killed six green slimes. Have to go kill some green slimes today. Yeah, yeah. I think it's like ten to somewhat will have green slime, so I'm gonna start at ten. Or like eleven to somewhat, I should say. Yep, there's one. Or Help me keep track. Chat. Appreciate. Yeah, actually, even more than, that's five. Nevermind, chat. No need to count. Thank you, though. I won't make you guys do unnecessary math. Worst time. It is true. That might be a monster, bro, not a villain. Burn it up. LG. Health. That bug almost got me. Oh. That was, that was scary. Oh. Open two PM to ten PM. Wait a little longer. Demetrius and Melon. Uh, do you have any melons growing right now?
No.
Okay.
I need the water.
Still got eight days as long as we've Little bit left. I might as well. Wait for next season or have to buy a melon from somebody? There we go. Two clock. What do you mean? Monster eradication goals. Help us keep the valley safe. Twenty-six out of a thousand slimes, thirty-eight F-two-hundred bats, AR-fifty skeletons. I've killed a lot of these monsters. I guess each tier will probably have different. Uh. Hmm, I'm bad boots. I'm just choosing ice boot. Uh, eh, I'm just gonna get the bone sword and, and call it good. It should be fine without the ice boot. With, with the ice boot. Is there one defense, but they're too immune? Okay. And unmute Bibs. Ooh, rainbow trout. Crats. Hit this as a special attack? Oh, okay, it's got garb. That's actually Yeah, we could like a madman. That's much better. Your next pickaxe. Another third. Listen. Inventory. Fact. See note, iron.
Keep losing my frickin' fish.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Been trying really hard.
Is that the, the losing the fish sound effect?
Yeah. That was my version, my rendition. Brought to you by Bibs.
This version. Ooh. Turned around. Good baby, come on. Nice to Performance. Seventy-eight, lose the big one. There we go. Gotta do better about not taking
Free damage, get your free damage here.
Damage, get your damage. When kids sign up for public school? No. What thing do I not need? Iber. Oh, I picked up a bone sword.
Oh, you can go sell the other one when you go back tomorrow.
You already have a bone sword?
No.
Well, then, we I, I mean, appreciate the thought of selling it. Uh, somebody's bag down here. Still got time, still got time. Cool, not bad. I have all this iron. Hope that one. Moving. There we go. Thanks. Alright, one, one more. There we go. Alright, we, I got it. We're already ahead. Already good, so. Loading done, just for extra. Themethist. I'm pretty sure we already have that. Good. Down this way. Doesn't interest me. Go down.
Ten forty, just a heads up?
Yep. Uh, got the firewalker boots, which are three defense, three immunity, so yeah, glad I didn't
Okay, there's gonna be fire cords down in that level, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, but we will do that tomorrow. Hey. I'll put on my new boots. I got firewalker boots.
Hi, Bibs. Hello.
Thanks for grabbing those. New boots. The boot goofing. Boots are always one. IRL order, okay.
Hey, what time do you wanna hang with Corn?
Uh, whenever he's most available, I suppose. I don't really have any specific plans other than what we've already discussed, so.
Into eleven?
What's that?
To eleven or noon?
Uh, let's go noon, just so that I can be a little lazy in the morning. Just cause walking to work has been
Oh, gosh. Got stuck.
Ooh.
Be nervous.
I'd mostly could. Sorry if that picked you-
Mm-hmm, no, good.
Last day.
Level eight fishing.
Level three mining. I have pickaxe proficiency, I can make miner's treats, level three combat.
Ooh, look at all the money I brought in yesterday!
You take a look at that. Bubs don't play.
Maybe I play too much.
There we go.
Oh, the water, those melon. Forgot to do that.
Upper pickaxe is ready.
Oh, heck yeah, you wanna double team the mine today?
Heck yeah, I will throw... Pickaxe in this chest, you can pick it up, also throw in a bone sword. Recommend you throw that on, if you don't have thermal boots, go ahead and take that pair, but if you do, then you're good. They're probably just the, the better ones at the current level.
No, no, I'm good.
Okay.
Well, it's just-
I'm not worried anyway. That's my style. Uh, and then probably wanna get anything like food, like just pick a food item and then pick a whole bunch of it, probably. Cuz I got like thirty-one green algae on me.
Okay.
So like, um, we have a thing of cookies, two things of bread, and I think an omelet around?
I think I took the omelet.
You take the omelet. Alright, so yeah, we just got the one cookie and two bread here.
Okay, I'll take the-
And there's also horseradish, spring onion, stuff like that, if you will. Uh, dandelion, dandelions are pretty good to eat. Uh, daffodils are not good to eat. Actually, we eat. Spiceberries are great to eat. Yeah. But grabs food, we'll go take on a mat. I'm just gonna put that back for now.
Taking these hops.
Oh, did we get a barrel going?
Hmm?
We get a barrel going?
No, I'm just taking them just in case.
Ah, okay, we go to dungeon now?
Yeah.
Gotcha, you eat the hops?
Yeah.
Ah, okay. I wasn't quite sure why you were taking-
Oh.
Uh, I gotta stop by Clint's to pick up the new axe, I totally forgot. I'm actually gonna head a slightly different direction, but I'll meet you at the mines.
Okay.
Just let me know where you're at. Ooh, hydrate spell from Nurg, thank you, buddy.
Oh, okay.
But I have a, alright, man, so, yeah. Great, bye. With my water, thank you, mate.
I got my own firewalker boots.
Coffee? Probably the better way to do it. I didn't think about that. Don't think you'll make all five by the time I get there, but-
Might.
Yeah, you might.
I'm a speed demon in the mines, bro, wow, first ladder. Magneto.
Magneto's will be our ones that can possibly have the fire cords, or we can just find fire.
Oh, yikes.
Help is on the way, dear!
I'm on eighty-two. Ladder.
Nice. You on eighty-three?
Yeah. Eighty-four.
Oh. Want me to just hold and meet you at eighty-five?
Yeah, might as well.
Alright.
Mushroom for one of the packs.
Hey, that's awesome.
I think the dye pack in the, um...
The artisans?
Nordic forge.
Oh, that would make sense.
Okay, it's gonna be a second ladder. Can't find this one, found it ladder, eighty-five's open.
Let's go! Eighty-five! What's up, Goob? Hopefully we'll find some better weapons these levels. From enemy, or from boxes? I can take it? That's cool. Else can't get it.
Ladder.
Yep. I like how as you get higher and higher, the rocks have a better chance of containing the useful mineral instead of... All these ones that pop up and get golden coal on these levels.
Ladder, oh, go get that fire quartz. On the other side.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I went down just as I saw it.
You're good, you're good. Got my bone sword.
I also found the next ladder, so I'm gonna go explore this room.
Gotta go fight this magic dude. Got him. Easy, hey, you got a lo- second ladder open.
Oh, second, yeah. I also got a second ladder open from a monster kill. I'm gonna advance down my, oh, three ladders!
Dang, uh, that, oh.
Yeah, I'm gonna go down the last ladder.
There.
Hello.
Down to ninety now?
No.
Eighty-nine?
Yeah, there, no, oh, I just dropped into a monster-infested area.
Oh, crap, I'm coming, I'm coming.
No, I'm good.
Oh, yeah, I know. Here, low. Ah, I see. I like how wide the sweep is on the bone sword. Just keep it like that. Get better blocking their attacks. Don't do that often though. Yep, I know, buddy, thank you though. This is our last day, and then we are wrapping. How much of the dungeons can we get done first? Thanks, bud. Wish us luck. Ah, what the, this dude's just attacking the stairs! I think I did a lot of damage too. Problem. Hey, Goob, I'm kinda hurting.
I got you, I'm coming.
Alright, I just need a sec to heal. Don't wanna get targeted by everybody while I do stuff. Uh, I've gotta add something more nutritious in here, come on. White algae's a little better. Uh, shoot, I'm kinda just hurt, I'll just have to play safe, we just gotta get down one more level. Got ninety, we got ten more and then we're done with it. This dungeon. That'll be good enough. That's only six people, we're doing good. Might be able to make it to water, but I don't- Disarm, oh no!
I'm coming!
I'm disarm, yeah, 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 I, I can use my tools, but I, I can't fight back, oh. Oh, no.
Okay, cuz I got all of them.
Alright, alright, gotta get out of here. Gotta make it to ninety.
Uh-oh.
You know what's gonna happen to my-
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
Ladder, ladder!
Ah, drop, 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 go, go, go! Ah!
I'm staying in edge.
Ooh, hell, yeah, oh, I don't have any room, I gotta throw something out. I'm gonna throw these make seeds out, get out.
I'm gonna see what the next level looks like, just cuz we got time, but I don't think I'm gonna stay very long.
I'll go down.
Okay, yeah, we're alright, we're alright, we're kinda stuck, but... Oh, ah.
Got him.
Alright, yeah, that does tons of damage now. Ooh, there's already an open ladder. I'm gonna try to rush it.
Here you go, 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 we can come back.
Alright, alright, we got a bad guy, I'm gonna rush him.
Speedboat! You have enough health to do that?
Hmm, probably not. Find out though.
I have enough.
I just start busting rocks.
It's gonna be down here.
Possibly. That's an armored dude, be careful. He's the ones you wanna hit with both a sword and a pickaxe. Grab that coal with our magnets and run! Alright, 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 ladder! Oh, bad guy, watch out, need to drop down. Got him? I'm gonna, I'm gonna heal some.
Ladder.
Alright, I see it, call. I'm gonna eat three of these and then I'll rush over. Three.
Ninety-five. I'm gonna at least go get this awkward, or these diamonds right here. Okay.
Ninety-five, great, and we can, uh, elevate it here.
Oh, my inventory is full, huh?
I'll grab it, I'll grab it. Got it.
Are we going down more?
Yeah, just look for ladder. Uh, let's check this room.
Okay.
We got time, we can do this.
Oh, bomb!
Okay, I totally forgot that I was disarmed, oh goodness, I will refund you, buddy, I apologize. Let me... Refund. There you go. Should've done it.
I also picked up a hammer?
I totally forgot. When I was, I was just so freaked out and trying to get out in time to, to get there for die, I apologize, buddy. But, unless, uh, I'll make it up to you in the future.
I don't think we're gonna find it.
We gotta. We're so close. Come on, come on, come on.
I bet it's, oh, it's right here, hang on.
Just gonna rush, purple mushroom.
Hey, grab that, cuz there's two bundles, I need it.
Yeah, 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 there's, there's a lot down here.
Okay, sick, red, I don't-
Uh, uh...
I almost threw my pickaxe away, that was so scary.
Oh, did I get ladder, no, crap. I don't think I'm gonna get ladder quick enough, if I don't get it before midnight, we're not gonna, I don't think we're gonna get down in time.
Oh, we need to skedaddle.
Yeah, we're not gonna make it otherwise, let's just go ahead and go. Leave mine. Come on, Goob.
I was risking it for the mushrooms!
It's alright, it's alright, come on, come on, come on, I'm sticking behind to wait for you, so if you risk it, I risk it.
Go, 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 I'm out.
Alright, go!
Picked up a hammer. I'm so stressed, I'm so freaking stressed out right now.
Alright, we got a hundred and twenty seconds, I think we can make it. Gonna go straight there. Alright, I'll go low, you go high.
Already did.
Yep.
It's faster to go higher.
I'm sure. I'm sure by my, some minor measurement. But also this feels a lot more like direct to me. I don't know why. Maybe it's cuz you're doing like a lot of, I'm doing a lot of like back and forth, like down, over, down, over, while you're doing just like one at a time. Over.
It's twelve fifty.
Yep, sixty seconds. We just gotta get to bed for the night. We are good. We're close. We're alright. Hmm, I don't think I'm gonna have time, cuz you're doing it, so I'm, I'm just gonna go to bed. Not gonna risk it. Listen, I won't say anything incorrect, alright, I'm in bed. Forty seconds.
Oh!
Thirty seconds to spare.
Level three combat.
Heck yeah, heck yeah! Look at that. Fantastic. Alright, go ahead and, yep, we've saved, so I wanna go ahead and close the server down as we gently begin to say goodbye to everybody as we come out of this last thirty seconds of ad break. Wonder, let me activate some of these oldies. Uh... There it is. There it is! There's another one. Yeah, there it is, little smiley face, cursor. I know there's more Easter eggs in here, but these are super fun. Well, that is about gonna do us for today, guys, uh, one last time, just a, a huge shout out to HelloFresh and their sponsoring of this stream. If you follow the link down below or use my code, that's one last reminder, you get a free breakfast item for life, one extra breakfast item per box during your subscription the entire time it's active for the rest of ever. So, if you're interested in that, if, uh, HelloFresh and Meal Primp are something you would like to learn more about, then go learn more from them. And if not, I will see you guys on Tuesday for our regular scheduled program, where we don't focus so much on our sponsor and we all hang out and, uh, talk games. Uh, be excited for Baldur's Gate three starting this week, I'm so excited, I can't wait to see you guys and talk more about new ideas I have for the channel, so hopefully it all goes well, but until then, you get some good rest, I'll get some good rest, get some good food. If you haven't eaten today, or if you haven't eaten enough today, go get some good food, and I will talk to you guys later, say bye, babes!
Bye!